Two.
Two.
Oh, you have two?
Yeah.
Oh, a docket.
One.
Who's planning commissioned by all of us?
One from P and D.
What's the other one?
All this meeting in order, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the states of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, can we start with a roll call?
Council President O'Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember McGurven.
Here.
Councilmember Prince. Member Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Van.
Here.
Councilmember Alberston.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
All right, and tonight we're starting off with a couple of proclamations, and the first one is Affordable Housing Week.
A proclamation, whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, defines affordable housing as housing on which the occupant is paying no more than thirty percent of gross income for housing costs, including utilities, and whereas seven thousand, seven hundred and two Renton families are considered housing insecure because they are spending more than half of their income on rent and utilities, and whereas all people should have access to safe, healthy, and affordable homes within their communities, which benefits the people who reside in their properties, their neighbors, businesses, employers, and the community as a whole, and whereas the City of Renton twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-eight Business Plan has the goal to provide a safe, healthy, and vibrant community, and the city achieves and furthers the goals of the Business Plan by working with affordable housing partners, and whereas two such organizations are Habitat for Humanity, Seattle King, and Kitatis Counties, and Homestead Community Land Trust, nonprofit affordable homeownership developers providing affordable housing in the City of Renton, and whereas the City of Renton endorses the goals, objectives, and purposes of Affordable Housing Week and recommits to providing a community that thrives with opportunity, where all people live with dignity in safe, healthy, and affordable homes, and whereas for more information about Affordable Housing Week education and advocacy events, residents can visit www.housingconsortium.org/affordable-housing-week. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim May seventh through May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, to be Affordable Housing Week in the City of Renton, and I encourage all residents to join me in the special observance and witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this eighth day of May, two thousand twenty-three, signed Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President O'Halloran.
I move the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Council President O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Prince, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries, and tonight to accept the proclamation, we have two people with us. We have Kathleen Hosford from Homestead Community Land Trust, and also, I believe we have Cliff Coffin. Is Cliff with us tonight? Cliff was on the main. Would you like to say a few words, then we'll take a picture?
Oh, sure, here.
That'll work.
That works.
Is that...
Yeah.
Totally fine.
Thank you, Mayor Pavoni, and the Council of the City of Renton. We're so grateful for your recognition and partnership in the creation of affordable housing, affordable housing across the spectrum, whether it be homeless housing, or permanent supportive housing, or homeownership housing, as Homestead and Habitat engage in, create vibrant communities where everyone can find a place to live and contribute. So we're very grateful for your recognition of the importance of our work, and thank you for this proclamation.
Absolutely. Thank you for all you're doing. Before you leave, we're gonna take a picture, okay? All right.
Are leaving me by nose.
Yeah.
Oh, hey, Cloak.
Yeah.
Can we move a little bit?
All right.
Okay.
One, two, three, and one, and three.
Thank you.
Excellent. I'm sure.
For building safety.
Awesome. Well, City Council, Mayor Pavoni, thank you so much. So sorry I had to run in on that. I was just getting my, you know, evening cardio. You gotta stay healthy. So first of all, I just wanted to express a deep gratitude from Seattle King County and Kitatis County Habitat for Humanity. We're your neighbors. We're right down the road. We are currently building a wonderful affordable housing project here in the City of Renton that we have been bragging about for many, many months now, and we're looking forward to addressing, you know, a lot of the issues there and moving folks in soon enough. And oh, yeah, well, one thing I want to say is that right now we have a really major opportunity that today, governor Enslie passed or signed nine pieces of housing legislation into law, one of which that it really affects me very deeply, covenant homeownership account legislation, but another one I've been working on for several years, which was our middle housing bill. We have the opportunity to build duplexes, triplexes, more affordable housing types all around the state. So I encourage you to take that journey with us to build affordable homeownership opportunities for residents here in Renton, so they can continue to build the city up. This is a city where my wife went to high school, and this is the city where I had my first job in when I moved to Washington almost ten years ago, that I, as well as Habitat for Humanity, Seattle King, and Kitatis County, want to see the City of Renton thrive and grow. So we, yeah, we look forward to working together in the future. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, and next we have Building Safety Month.
A proclamation, whereas the City of Renton is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depend on the safety of our homes, buildings, and infrastructure, both in everyday life and when disaster strikes, and whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building, safety, and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year round to ensure the safe construction of buildings, and whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play, and whereas these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildfires, floods, and earthquakes, and whereas it starts with you, the theme of Building Safety Month encourages us all to raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale, and whereas we acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim May two thousand twenty-three to be Building Safety Month in the City of Renton, and I encourage all residents to join me in the special observance and witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this eighth day of May, two thousand twenty-three, signed Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Council President O'Halloran, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries, and tonight to accept the proclamation is Development Service Director Rob Shuey and team.
Man, I had the speech all written up. Then I heard the proclamation, and it pretty much said everything that was in my speech. So I'm like, well, jeez, what do I do now? You know, I am gonna pick some parts from it here, though. You know, thank you, guys, very much. This really means a lot to us. You know, it means a lot to me, but I think it means more to these guys here. You know, the team that we have right now, the building inspectors, the code compliance inspectors, our plans examiners, you know, it takes a coordinated team to really provide the kind of service that we expect here in the City of Renton. You know, we do it for our citizens, our customers, and, you know, building codes, they do save lives. There's no doubt about it. The International Code Council gives us a great tool in the codebooks that we use, but the City Council, you know, you guys give us the tools we need, too. You give us great equipment, you know, you give us fantastic vehicles and great desks, and everything we need, you know, is because we have your support, and I think knowing that we have your support just kind of raises us up a little bit as a team. You know, these guys work hard every day. I'm super proud of them, and I'm really glad that we were able to, you know, to come here before you guys today and get this proclamation. Thank you very much.
So, Rob, before you go, I'm extremely impressed that your entire team or a large portion of them are here. Will you introduce everybody really quickly?
Absolutely, yes.
That'd be fantastic.
Yeah, absolutely. Right over here, stand up when I say your name. Scott Mitchell. He's our lead building inspector. He oversees the inspection group on a day-to-day basis, helps them out. We've got Rob Thompson. He's one of our electrical inspectors. We've got Al Findley. He's our engineering plans examiner. Lee, he's one of our building plans examiners. Next to him is David Hedwell. David's one of our newer building inspectors, came on here. Triplet was one of our permit technicians. Back to back corner. Who's back there? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Keith Minor. I thought he was stamped by one shirt. Yeah. Eric Pittsold, he's one of our compliance inspectors. Melissa Camp House, permit manager, or permit center manager. Paul Wong is one of our other plans examiners. Hooker sitting over here. She's our compliance inspector. Yeah, yeah. So I was really excited that I could get these guys to show up tonight. I think, you know, it just means a lot to all of us to, you know, to be able to look you guys, to look at you guys, and you see the team, you know. We don't always get the best reputation because a lot of times we have to go out, and we can't always say yes. Once in a while, we have to say, no, I'm sorry, you know, this needs to be fixed, or we can't continue. Our motto, though, and I'm really proud of this, is, you know, every time we pull up to a job site, every time an inspector pulls up and gets out of his truck, I expect him to think in his head, how am I gonna keep this project moving today? How are we gonna keep things going? I don't want to stop this guy today, you know, so we do everything we can to try to, you know, I know it's taking too much time, but great story. I got a phone call last Friday from a gal who was having a hard time figuring out our portal and how to do her permit, and how to get her plans, and this and that. She's in the middle of a project, and the one thing she did say to me, she goes, I said, well, you know what you could do is ask your inspector when he comes out. She goes, oh, my God, the inspectors are the best. She goes, they have been so helpful. I can't believe how helpful they are. So, you know, that made me feel good.
No.
All right, guys, thank you so much.
Thank you. Before you go, let's take a picture.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Come on.
This is gonna be one of those, though.
Yeah.
All to be told.
All right, here on the move-in place. Thank you. Ready? Two, three. And two, and three, and one more, two, and... Thank you. All right.
Recording in progress.
Okay, and next up is the administrative report.
All right. Good evening, everyone. A pop-up lunch, providing lunch, hygiene kits, socks, and pet food is scheduled for Wednesday, May tenth, from twelve to one thirty P.M. at three hundred Rainier Avenue North, sponsored by the Emergency Feeding Program, SOS, and will be held regularly on the second and fourth Wednesday through December of two thousand twenty-three. In partnerships with several agencies serving the Renton community, the Renton Library at one hundred Mill Avenue South will be hosting Resource Days on Friday, May twelfth, from eleven A.M. to two P.M. This event will offer help in obtaining a phone, getting access to free meals, clothing, hygiene kits, haircuts, personal identification cards, and connecting with community agencies. Bring your scrap metal, large appliances, and styrofoam to the recycling event at Renton Technical College parking lot. That's northeast Sixth Place and Monroe Avenue Northeast. On Saturday, May thirteenth, from ten A.M. to two P.M., non-perishable food items will also be collected for distribution to Renton area food banks. For more information, please go to rentonwa.gov/recycleevents. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, road closures, and I four oh five work happening this week can be found at rentonwa.gov/tráfico. All projects are weather permitting, and unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open.
All right, thank you. Next up is audience comment. We have one person sign up when I called your name. Please step up to the dais, state your name, city of residence, and what you'll be speaking on, and you'll have three minutes. And first up is Peter James Spicer. Peter? How do you sign up? Do we have somebody online?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, there's no one online. He had signed up in person. He had signed up virtually to be here in person.
Okay. All right, then we have no audience comment. We are gonna move on to consent agenda. There are four items. Are there any council would like pulled for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President O'Halloran.
I hearing none. I move that the consent agenda be approved as published.
Second.
It's been moved by Council President O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Prince, that the consent agenda be approved as published. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. We're on to unfinished business. Council President O'Halloran.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Planning and Development Committee has two committee reports.
A Planning and Development Committee committee report. The first one's regarding Title Four Docked Eighteen Group A, I believe, bylaws for the Planning Commission. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in the staff and Planning Commission recommendation to adopt the two thousand twenty-three Title Four Docked Eighteen Group A, oh, this is a different one, Group A Item D two twenty-six Home Occupation. The Planning and Development Committee further recommends that an ordinance for this item be prepared and presented for first reading when this is complete. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
I move that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the second report for the Planning and Development Committee is regarding the Planning Commission bylaws. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to accept the Planning Commission bylaws adopted by the commission during its regular meeting on April fifth, two thousand twenty-three. The committee further recommends that the resolution regarding this item be presented for reading and adoption. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
I move that the council concur with the Planning Development Committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. All right, next up is Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee has five committee reports to present.
Hey, the Finance Committee report, the first is regarding approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments. Council payable total payment is sixty-three million, four hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-five cents for a number of vouchers, including payroll benefit withholding vouchers, and six wire transfers, and payroll, a total payment of one million, eight hundred, sixteen thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-eight cents for a number of payroll vouchers that include six hundred and fifty-six direct deposits and six checks. This is the April first through April fifteenth pay period. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember Alberston, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
The next report is regarding a grant from the Department of Ecology. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the Water Quality Grant Agreement, WQC dash two thousand twenty-three dash Renton dash zero zero one eight seven, with the State of Washington Department of Ecology to accept nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in grant funds for the Burnett Avenue South and Williams Avenue South Water Quality retrofit project. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Perez.
Very happy to accept that grant to improve our infrastructure and the same time that we are protecting our environment. So with that, I will move that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember Alberston, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding a grant from the Washington Traffic Safety Commission. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with the Washington Traffic Safety Commission to accept two thousand five hundred dollars for the King County distracted driving campaign. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
Another grant. This is a small figure, but very helpful for our police department. So with that, I will move that the council concur with Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember Alberston, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding a utility bill leak adjustment for the leisure estates mobile home park. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the adjustment to customer account one two two six nine dash zero 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 in the amount of thirteen thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty-six cents for excess consumption caused by a qualified water line leak in accordance with Rent Municipal Code eight four forty-six and eight five twenty-three. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember Alberston, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
The final Finance Committee report is regarding a Springbrook Creek Wetlands Mitigation Bank credit sale. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a mitigation credit purchase agreement with Seattle Soccer LLC doing business as the Seattle Sounders FC Center at Long Acres. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. McGurven?
Councilmember Perez.
I want to thank our amazing Public Works Department for today presenting us a very enlightening report about the mitigation bank credit. It really was very enlightening for me, I guess, for Councilmember James Alberston as well. We learn a lot. So with that, I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember Alberston, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. All right, Councilmember Van.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alberston.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
We're on to legislation. We have two resolutions for adoption, and one ordinance for second and final reading.
The first resolution is regarding the Planning Commission bylaws, a resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, accepting the Planning Commission bylaws.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember McGurven, that the resolution be approved as published, yes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries.
The second resolution is regarding that mitigation bank sale to the Seattle Sounders. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a mitigation credit purchase agreement and acknowledgement with Seattle Soccer LLC doing business as the Seattle Sounders FC, and further authorizing the sale of zero point one eight seven five credits from the Springbrook Creek Wetland Mitigation Bank for the sum of two hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-six cents.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I thank Public Works, but I forgot to thank also our CED Department. They also were there, giving us a great presentation. So I want to thank both of your staff because they were actually the experts, and it's incredible how valuable our employees are in the city. And with that, I move that the council adopt the resolution as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember Alberston, that the resolution be adopted as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, and then we have one ordinance. It's for second and final reading, and it's regarding compost procurement. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Title Eight of the Rent Municipal Code by adding Chapter Nine, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
It's Councilmember Alberston.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Alberston, second by Councilmember Rivera, that the ordinance be adopted as read. The second reading requires a roll call.
Hey, Council President O'Halloran.
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven.
Aye.
Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Van.
Aye.
Councilmember Alberston.
Aye.
And Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
All right, motion carries, and that gets us on to new business. Council President O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, May the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at five forty-five P.M., the committee of the whole will be meeting in council chambers and via video conference. We have one item on the agenda, and that is the Blake Impact and Recommendation. And then on Monday, May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at seven P.M., we will have a regularly scheduled council meeting here in the council chambers, as well as via video conference. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember McGurven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just need to announce the Transportation Committee that would have occurred on Monday, May fifteenth, has been canceled, and that's all.
Councilmember Prince.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Safety Committee has business on May fifteen, two thousand twenty-three, at four forty-five P.M. The Public Safety Committee will be meeting at the council conference room and via video conference. We have three items on the agenda. One, police seizure and forfeiture process. Two, RFA briefing. And three, emerging issues in public safety. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Alberston.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I want to announce that on Monday, May fifteenth, at three forty-five P.M., the Utilities Committee will be meeting in the council conference room and via video conference. Three items on the agenda: support for RE Plus, King County's new waste reduction program, agreement, or number two agreement with RH Two Engineering Incorporated for services during construction of the West Hill Booster Pump Station improvements project, and number three agreement with Geo Engineers Incorporated for the Panther Creek at Talbot Road South Culvert replacement project, and number four, I imagine, any emerging issues that may pop up. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Rivera.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, items. What's with the council?
Move adjourn.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Alberston, that we adjourn. that we adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay.